This livestream brought to you by the Excelsior Citizen and these generous sponsors. The Simmons Sales Team, your hometown Realtors. Our Excelsior Springs Hospital, where better care is right in your backyard. Find out how you can advertise with Excelsior Springs' number one community resource. Visit excelsiocitizen.com today.
We're worried about you.
All right, it's that time. At this time I'd enter, or call the meeting to order. I'd entertain a motion to adopt the agenda. So, first by Kalen, second by Rick. All those in favor? And that passes six to zero. Please note that Troy is downtown Kansas City in line for the parade already. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, we're gonna go off script here. There's so many, we haven't seen so many of you in so long that I'm gonna ask all current administrators, teachers, or any new administrators that's in the audience to stand up and introduce themselves. Whoever wants to start, go.
I'm Ben Ruby and I am the director of the Career Center.
Hi, I'm Annette Shelton.
I'm Jessica Broadbent, I'm the assistant principal at Cornerstone Elementary.
Hi, I'm Annette Shelton, I'm the principal at Elkhorn Elementary.
Olivia Hochmeyer, instructional coach at Elkhorn.
I'm Kristin Everett, I'm the current high school principal.
I'm Sarah Wickham, the two D high school principal.
Katie Andreessen, early childhood principal, but tonight is mom.
I'm current activity stretcher.
Now who's got new titles for next year? It's just been so long since we've seen you guys all in one room that it's like, who are they?
Retired.
Yeah, 2020, 2019?
Boat captain.
Boat captain. Too soon. You have a big speech, Dr. Wickham, that you wanted to share with anyone?
Oh my goodness, I don't know about a big speech, but very excited to be here and to join the Excelsior Springs team. I try to get my husband home tonight with me in honor of Valentine's Day. No, but I'm very excited to join the team. Everyone has been super welcoming and appreciate Dr. Everett. She's been very helpful with the transition already and got to join the building leadership team meeting this afternoon. So that was fantastic and give me a couple of staff on Friday. So really looking forward to it and appreciate everyone's support.
Welcome. Congratulations to those of you who have new positions for next school year. And to those who are retiring. An extra special congratulation for those of you who are retiring at the end of school year. All right, now we're gonna go back to normal business. This time I'd entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda. First by Darren. Second by Jill. All those in favor? And that passes six to zero. Next up is recognition. Dr. Bullymore, you're up.
All right, we'll start with the February Classified Employee of the Month. So we would like to recognize Nurse Michelle Creer for her dedication to the students and staff at the middle school. Michelle is an exceptional nurse. She is extremely hardworking and very organized. She runs her health room efficiently and provides the best care for her students and staff. Michelle was nominated by our head district nurse, Laney Marshall. The Classified Employee of the Month award is sponsored by Excelsior Springs Hospital. Excelsior Springs Hospital proudly supports the students and staff of Excelsior Springs. We thank them for their support and congratulate Michelle. She was very thankful for the award and we presented it to her.
Still rolling.
Up next, we are going to recognize Ms. Olivia Hochmeyer. I told her she's been limited to a five-minute speech. But she was recognized by the Town and Country as receiving the Best Teacher in the Community Excellence Award for 2022. So we want to officially recognize her. We'll record it and we'll send it out. Me again. If it pleases the board, I would like to recognize the board for being the leaders and the Board of Education. We were recognized in the Town and Country as the best place to work with 50-plus employees. So we got you guys your own copy. Go us!
Congratulations, you guys.
Thank you.
See, I told you! That's what I thought it was. Only if you're over 50, it's the best place.
What'd you say?
I thought I said you're over 50 years old.
I'm over 50 and I can think of everything.
They're not always this much fun, just so you know.
Caught us on a good night.
All right, next up, thank you, Dr. Bullymore. Next up is our MSBA delegate report. Mr. McCown, almost doctored you there.
Should have video.
The Missouri School Board's Association's Board Report. We begin with a look at Governor's State of the State Address. On January 18th, Governor Carson delivered his annual State of the State Address, which laid out his legislative agenda. Education was once again a focus.
Now, as a product of public education, the father of a school teacher, the grandfather of a first-year school teacher, and preschooler, I know the American dream could not be possible for so many without quality education. This year, we will again fully fund the Foundation Formula with an additional $117 million to ensure Missouri schools are receiving the support they need.
During his speech, Governor Carson detailed the progress his administration has made in education funding, teacher pay, and workforce development. The governor's budget proposal also includes $233 million for school transportation needs, $32 million to expand the career ladder program, and continues the teacher baseline salary program that raised teacher pay from $25,000 to $38,000 per year. Additionally, the governor proposed $50 million for school safety grants for Missouri schools to make physical security investments on their campuses, develop security plans, establish school resource officer programs, and increase active threat trainings. Governor Carson also requested $56 million to expand pre-kindergarten options.
There is a clear need to do better when it comes to early childhood. Let's meet this moment for Missouri families, Missouri kids, and our businesses.
There are many issues being considered in the current session of the General Assembly that are of interest to MSBA and school board members throughout the state. As the legislative session progresses, we will keep you updated on these developments again this year through our Legislative Voice newsletter sent to members via email each Friday during the session, through critical issue alerts, periodic webinars, and MSBA's Action Center website. We urge you to stay in contact with your legislators during the session and communicate to them the impact legislation will have on your school district. MSBA Director of Governmental Relations, Branch Shields, says that in addition to advocating for your district, it's also important to serve as an educator to legislators.
There's not really a space for subject matter experts in our legislature. They have to be a foot deep and a mile wide across a whole bunch of issues. So be that subject matter expert for them when it comes to public education and be that trusted source so when they have questions, they know that they can come to you as a locally-elected school board member.
On that note, don't miss your chance to visit your legislator at the Capitol during MSBA's Advocacy Day. Known formerly as Legislative Forum Advocacy Day, is scheduled for March 28th in Jefferson City. The event will be preceded by a spring virtual meeting on March 1st and weekly luncheon learn sessions on Fridays to provide legislative updates on the issues that matter to you. Check the MSBA website for registration information for all of these events. MSBA is also pleased to sponsor School Board Recognition Month in March, as proclaimed by Governor Carson. It's a great opportunity for school districts and communities to recognize the great work of school board members and the important role local boards of education play as leaders of our public schools. And finally, on January 31st, parents, school board members, school leaders, and supporters from St. Louis Public Schools, Normandy Schools Collaborative, and Kansas City Public Schools visited the Capitol for the Parent Day of Action. The group was recognized by both the House and Senate and then set out to visit with legislators before ending the day with a rally for supporters in the Capitol Rotunda. Matt Davis, President of the City of St. Louis Board of Education, explained why it's important to tell the stories of local schools.
It's important to have the parents come, meet their legislators, meet legislators that they don't necessarily know but are passing bills that affect our schools and our students, and tell their stories. And to just sort of explain from their perspective why they are so happy with their public schools and why it's important to strengthen them.
Kansas City School Board Member Jennifer Woolsey says that although the Parents' Day of Action involves St. Louis and Kansas City parents, advocating for public schools is for everyone, regardless of district size.
I mean, really, there's more similarities between Kansas City and St. Louis and rural schools than there are differences a lot of times.
That's it for this month's edition of the MSBA Board Report. Thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting and for all that you do to ensure all students succeed.
Anything further, Darren?
No, sir.
All right. Next up, any visitors, Lisa? All right, no visitors, moving on to Cabinet Report. First up, business operations, Dr. Bullymore.
Yeah, if it pleases the board, we'd just like to share some updates from operations happening across the district. We'll start with transportation. As everyone knows, we've had a couple bus accidents over the last several weeks. So just wanted to give an update on those and on the safety training that we undergo for transportation. Luckily, none of those accidents were the fault of our drivers or of first-student busing. But I did want to review with you, just to let you know, the safety team, the bus drivers, and transportation, they undergo weekly safety meetings. They also have trainings anywhere from two to 10 hours every single month that they have to perform. And then when they meet weekly, they talk about things they're seeing in the community where are some hotspots. We've also had Officer Leonard has done a good job of being more visible and available at the high school parking lot before and after school. So that's helping with some of that congestion. So we're keeping an eye on those things. But with those recent accidents, I just wanted to keep you guys apprised of what we do with our safety trainings and that we are staying prepared. Another issue with transportation, ridership routes. So typically, right now, we do approximately 2,400 miles per day, activity trips, and those equal about 25,000 miles per year, just to give you an idea how much that we're driving. Staffing, just like everyone else, we're shorthanded. We currently have 34 drivers running about 38 total vehicles. Right now, we're at the minimum we can be and have buses staffed every month. So when someone's sick, our correspondent are transported there. She has to go drive, Kim, the director, has to go drive. So we're looking at now, what do we need to do? Talk to Kim about trying to run some numbers and seeing what we need to do to be more competitive with the districts around us. We're losing drivers to smaller districts simply because they're paying more. So her and I are gonna work together and come up with some numbers that we think can make us more competitive in the market so that way we can have our buses covered more often and we can cover those trips. So as we come up with those, we may be coming back with a proposal on that with the contract. But we'll keep you apprised of that as we move forward. We just want to make sure our kids have what they need and we're getting them to and from school.
Are those members with the current conference room with the chain?
Yeah, those are the current ones. So I can't imagine what it was when we were running.
Right, that's what I was saying. It was like a huge change.
Yeah, our closest school was Oak Grove in conference before and now that's past our furthest one. So that helps a little bit. And it helps, you know, our staff driver program has helped. You know, we have four or five that are enrolled in that and they're doing a good job. But it's still the daily basis, one driver calls in and it creates a chain reaction. So we're trying to do a better job of being more competitive with the markets around us to hire bus drivers. Safety, so working with Jeff Kinsey on finalizing an MO of U, a memo of understanding with the city so that way we can better utilize and appropriately know everyone's expectations and roles and responsibilities when it comes to utilizing our FEMA safety rooms. So not only with Cornerstone, but hopefully with a, you know, a future FEMA safe room at a new Lewis if we're able to build that. So we're working with Molly and we'll work with the chief of the police department, chief of fire station. Once we get that, we'll make sure we all agree on the roles and responsibilities there and we'll move forward with that. We've also started working on a standard operating procedure for the use of those facilities so everyone knows those roles and responsibilities. Once we get that from Jeff, we'll run it back through legal to make sure it's okay and then we'll run that by you guys too to keep you updated on what's going on. The hope is to get that approved at the March board meeting, you know, before storm season hits. Security updates, we're adding, we worked with Dr. Andreessen about adding cameras to the back of the ECC. It's kind of the last thing we need to do to make sure it's totally secure back there so we can see what's going on. And then if we're able to build a new Lewis and we transition those Lewis students over there, there's gonna be cameras that we can use at that point as well to make sure that we're visible on any students that are back there. Update on food service, so regional participation numbers for lunch. We are 8% above the regional average on lunch service, which in the corporate world and food service world, that's phenomenal, it being 8% above. We have a huge room, we're opportunity for improvement and growth in breakfast. We really need to see those numbers grow just so we can continue to be marketable to them. We're gonna go out to bid for food service next year. Our contract's gonna be up. And we want to make sure that we are attractive to those companies so that we can get low bids so it doesn't pull funds away from other people. So we're trying to increase those numbers so that way we're attracted to Airmark and other companies as well as we move forward into contract negotiations. So we're working on breakfast ideas, grab and go, breakfast in the classroom, those types of things. So hopefully that will help us there. And then we have special programs coming up. You know, we have middle school chili nights and do staff lunches. And so those things are trying to help those numbers as well. Transitioning on to career ladder. So to piggyback on what we have, MSBA report, met with the PDC and kind of used them and Dr. Miller, Dr. Kaufman, and Dr. Comstock were able to attend and we used them to develop a draft of what a district career ladder plan would look like. The funds are there, we talked about this a little bit before. Projected cost of the career ladder at, when we go to our presentation for you guys would be about 1.25. The state at this point is saying that we'll reimburse that at 60%. The crux of the whole thing is we need to have this plan in place so we can apply, but they're not gonna appropriate the funds till June. So we're gonna do all this work, we're gonna have all this set up. It's right for teachers, you know, they're gonna be reimbursed for tutoring and committees and all these things that are good for students. And we're crossing our fingers that they're gonna approve it in June, but you never know. So the plan next is, we met with the PDC, we have a great plan in place with three stages. The next plan will be to meet with building administrators, get their feedback on it. We're doing that in about two weeks. And then we'll bring that to you guys for approval, probably in April or May sometime. And then, fingers crossed, we get something from the state appropriated on the 30th. Leroy's gonna go ahead and run the video. So I just want to get you some updates on Proposition Lewis. If you haven't seen the website yet, you can go there, that's the short Billy. He's gonna run the Lewis rendering there. You can find that on the website as well, as far as some of our social media accounts. We've officially kicked off, appreciate you guys that are sharing that information. Dr. Tomlinson and I met with the Lewis pals last night, shared the brief overview of the plan, what the proposition looks like, what actually we're looking for. Some important dates coming up for Proposition Lewis. We had the Lewis pals meeting last night. We're working in March, we're working with the community center to try and host some type of luncheon program for the senior luncheon. They get anywhere from 50.
This is Jules, VP of the catch-up company.
Hello, Jules.
About to do this rambly.
Rambly. So we're gonna work with Nate Williams and the senior luncheon director to have some programming there, just to be able to speak with them, with our senior population about what Proposition Lewis is, just to make sure they're aware of what's going on. March 1st, we're gonna have the Proposition Lewis open forum and tour of Cornerstone. So we want to invite everyone to come out to that. Stakeholders will be able to tour Lewis and then they can come ask questions in the Lewis gym and then we can bus them over, they're free to drive themselves over to Cornerstone. Actually, when we met last night, we found out many of the Lewis families have never even been to Cornerstone. So this will be a great opportunity for them to go straight from Lewis and to go visit a brand-new school which could potentially be built for them and to see that and to see the differences. So we're gonna take them from that open forum over to Cornerstone. They could tour that building. And then we'll kind of have a little meet and greet, discuss some of the topics over there. And Ms. Broadbent and Dr. Comstock are gonna help us with that and some of the, share some of the new opportunities and exciting things that a new Lewis could provide for our families. So we're really excited about that. March 3rd, we're gonna meet with the all staff during the PD Day and talk about Proposition Lewis and just the do's and don'ts of a staff member when you're on staff time or not on staff time. But also the importance this is to our community. March 8th is the last day to register to vote and then March 15th will be hosting the Chamber of Commerce Luncheon. And that's still TBD where it's gonna be at. So that's all that I have. Does anyone have any questions about Proposition Lewis or anything operations?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Great, appreciate it. Next up is academic services, Dr. Miller.
Thank you. So I wanted to give you an update on some things that I'm currently working on. The lovely thing about the curriculum and instruction job is that my job is never done, ever. So I will never come here and be like, I nailed it, I'm done with everything. It's just on a cycle that's continuous. One of the things that I'm working on now is creating a robust curriculum and instruction handbook, which I'll let you guys read as soon as it's done. It'll be riveting. We really are lacking some basic processes in place. Everything from a curriculum cycle to our grading philosophy. The last one that I have, that I found, I did some deep digging and found the last time that we really reflected on our current grading philosophy and our assessment philosophy was in 2011. So just trying to catch up on a lot of the things that needed to be revisited. So currently working on that. Some big plans with the principals to try to get their input on that, to really kind of outline who we are. Everything from resource selection to course alignment, all of that stuff, Desi expects you to have it outlined. So I think right now I'm up to 65 pages in my handbook and I'm not quite done yet. So after I get that, then we move on to literacy. Again, one of the things that with Senate Bill 681, the, Desi is actually funding a lot of our literacy programs. In order to do that, they expect you to have a very detailed literacy handbook that outlines kind of how you're gonna address kids that are struggling to read. We don't have one currently, so the first step is that curriculum and instruction handbook and then moving on to that literacy framework. So that's gonna take, again, some work with the principals, title teachers, sped, getting everyone together to kind of determine interventions and supports that we provide for kids. One of the things that I am prideful about is sending as many teachers as we can as a district to go and sit on some Desi assessment opportunities. So we've sent several teachers, several instructional coaches to actually go and sit at various places down at Jefferson City to actually work on map testing and do some of the work associated with that to better familiarize themselves with how that functions and works. So that's kind of a little bit about what I'm working on. It's, I'll probably still be working on it this time next month. So I'll try to come up with something else to talk about. On the next slide, wanted to give a huge shout-out to John Coleman and the tech department. It was about, I think when I first came to the district, I sat down and decided what I wanted my ideal classroom to look like and what I wanted my ideal device to look like to hand a kid. And so what I had described, actually when John got here, I said I want every elementary kid to have an iPad with a keyboard. The middle school and high school kids, I wanted to have a Chromebook because that's really more real world and one thing that they were needing. And I wanted every teacher to have a MacBook in their hand. In addition to that, secondary classrooms needed the devices in order to work with that. So in just one year, John has ran himself ragged to make sure that that's in the hands of every kid. So all of those things are done and are complete. So just huge shout-out to the principals that made sure that the kids actually, they deployed the devices and did some, anytime you work with grant stuff, there's always some hoops to jump through and they did all of that beautifully. But the tech department worked really, really hard to make this happen as quickly as possible. So I'm very, very proud of them. The last thing that I really need to do is look at the elementary classrooms to make sure that all of them have some kind of a touchscreen device in their classrooms. As you know, we just built Cornerstone and that was, that was before me. And the device that they actually chose is actually a big TV. So we may be looking at making some additional purchases. We'll always reach out for grants opportunities. John does an excellent job of applying for free money when he can. So very proud of those guys. Wanted to highlight the fun things happening in school and to humiliate Annette a little bit, which is always fun for me. So this was like a huge week and everything happened within one week. We had our 100th day of school and I could, I could just overwhelm you with pictures of cute kids. So 100th day of school, we had Chiefs mania. We had just every Chiefs celebration day you can possibly think of. And then the professional development committee, once a year during February, typically, this is a low time and a low-spirited time. Like typically, you plan for this time in February, that teachers need to be picked up and all these, you know, get them through the hard winter. And it just so happened to go right along with the Chiefs victory. So I mean, everybody has never been in better spirits. So they sponsor actually a Take Care of Yourself Week is what they call it. So each day, it's about mental health and wellness. And like I said, it happened to go right in line when everybody seemed to be very happy. So it just happened to work out. The picture I love, like, I always say, Elkhorn knows how to party. Like they go all out and going above and beyond and doing things special for their kids. So I wanted to highlight, they had a Throwback Workout Wednesday. And so they had like vintage 80's workout gear and I just couldn't help myself. So I wanted to put the picture in here.
I didn't notice the difference in her attire.
And this also will probably mark the end of my sister ever sending me a picture ever again. Look what happens, so. And that wraps it up for me unless anyone has any question.
There are no questions, we'll move on. Student services, Dr. Gross.
Okay, thank you. Okay, just wanted to share a few things going on in the student services department. We'll start with special education, since that's one of our big ones. We just recently had our December count confirmed. And what our December count is, is it is the number of students that we have on individualized education plans, IEPs. And you can see there what the expected threshold is. At 10% of our student population, you can see where we are with the blue line and where the stake percentage is. So we're operating in a pretty good spot. One of the things I'm happy about is, you know, we never, you know, really could predict where we would be at this time after COVID and a lot of kids are just missing instruction and what that would look like for us and, you know, really ensuring that we're just providing interventions in that situation and giving kids the instruction they need and not labeling kids with a disability. So we're in a pretty good spot there. So we have 335 students on our December count and that's kind of right in track with where we should be. The next slide is just a little bit more about special education and what we're working on right now. Of course, a lot of things are happening in the classroom, but there are a lot of external things that are happening as well. With our federal funding, we have to be on a three-year cycle to do some things to prove that we're meeting those regulations. And right now, we're in tiered monitoring. We're about the third bullet down. We're working on some specific files that Desi has requested, which is just a normal part of the process. And we're also working on our parent education survey. We're excited to get the feedback. This is a survey that's specifically for parents of students with IEPs. And so we're excited to get that feedback. And then of course, eventually, we will get a grade for our compliance and we've always done really well on that, so we intend to do well on that again. Also wanted to share with you our resident two student update. Our resident two students are students that, you know, have some specific needs that we're just not able to service here in our district boundaries. So we send those students to outside placements to make sure they have what they need and can get that free, appropriate education. We had 16 students last year, we have 19 this year, but two of those transferred into us. So of course, we're gonna continue to provide what they need and get them to the correct placement. So we're in a pretty good spot there. And just a reminder, that is a higher cost for us, but we do get reimbursement on those students and those services as well. So just wanted to give you an update where we're at with that. Federal programs, where one really awesome thing is that when we're in the tiered monitoring year for special education, we're also in the tiered monitoring year for all of our federal programs. So that can be good, but it can also be a little bit crazy because it's all happening at one time. So our title teachers really have a lot of work in tiered monitoring. We're excited because we've already completed October and December and got good marks on all of that. And we're working on our April tiered monitoring piece now, which a big part of that will include our annual title evaluation meeting that we'll have in April. We'll invite parents in, of course, we'll have lots of school personnel there as well and just talk about what we're doing to service those students and whether or not it's working and starting to write our plans for next year. And a big piece that I wanted to point out that is just quite a jump that I think is worth noting is, when we did our last tiered monitoring, we had one non-public to verify. And what I mean by non-public is we do have some students that reside in the Excelsior Springs School District, but their parents may choose to place them elsewhere, like in a parochial school, maybe in Liberty or Carney or something like that. And we only had one to verify back then and we have eight non-publics now. So we have up to 20 students that are attending non-public schools. And really, the implication for us is that if any of those And really the implication for us is that if any of those students need title services, we do have to fund those title services for them. And we do receive money for that, but it's just something to, to, to make note of it. That's a big increase. McKinney-Vento, those are our students that are classified and identified as homeless. We have 94 students. That's a pretty good number. We're right in line with the expectation. That number is expected to be around 7% of our free and reduced population. So that's, I think that's 97 students. So we're at 94. So that's a pretty good spot.
Can you give them a little example of maybe what could qualify for McKinney-Vento? I think people have an idea in their head of homeless on the street. What are some of the other, maybe just so they kind of get a good idea of what would encapsulate McKinney-Vento?
A McKinney-Vento situation, the most common one is when families are doubled up with each other. So the student isn't actually homeless on the street, but because they do not have a permanent residence and they might be doubled up with another, another family, they can classify as homeless or McKinney-Vento. Which in that situation would protect that student if something were, were to happen and they were, you know, transient, then they could still be our student, even if they're doubled up over in Carney, for, for example. If they started as our student and that's where we identified them as homeless, they can still be our student and we can maybe split the cost of transportation with Carney to be able to get that student back over here. Because what tends to happen in that situation is they're not going to be doubled up in Carney for long. So to make them a Carney student is really not in that student's best interest. We want to keep them as our student because they're probably going to be back. So that's the most common that we see. And then we also have a few unaccompanied youth. And maybe there's a youth that's, you know, they're no longer living with their parent and they're, you know, sleeping on someone's couch or something like that, a friend's house. So that's a common one as well. And of course, Kim Curtis is our, our main contact for that and really works to support those students. We have two English language learner students, so still very tiny population with that. And you can see our gifted population there. We're doing great on that as well. Children's Fund is always one of my favorite things to talk about. So I definitely want to highlight that and probably will every time. You can see there the first bullet, what our expenditures are. So far that's from July 1 of '22 until February 6, when I created this report for you. So we're doing pretty well on our spending. At the end of this month, we will be turning in just a new allocation for our funding for next year. That is the funding we've already been approved for, but we might reallocate some things based on how the spending went this past year. Just want to make note of their new logo. You can see that on the right side. They're really proud of it and we're going to advertise it anytime we can because they do support us a lot. So we're excited about that new logo. As you can see on the service categories and the number of children served, prevention is still our primary piece, but we do have a lot of ways to intervene for kids as well. And the last slide there, this is going to be an even bigger piece of our children's fund. So when I say reallocation, we're going to start to expand our PBIS as we, as we revamp this in our schools. We're excited about the work we've been doing. When I came to you last night and talked about the district leadership team that is really working to revamp that and make that more of a priority again to help with our, our behavior needs in each building. And these will be the allocations that we have planned according to the district leadership team to be a part of that children's funding for next year. So that's it for me unless anybody has any questions.
Can you go up to the, that slide right there? Thank you, Leroy. When on the group therapy, would that be like family therapy or would that be multiple kids in one session?
That's multiple kids in one. Yes.
I didn't know if it was like family.
So that is, we have several different expressive therapies. Like we have art therapy, music therapy. Yeah. So that's what that would look like.
Any other questions for Dr. Gross?
I know they've been doing a fantastic job. A lot.
Thank you guys very much. Appreciate it. All right. Next up is Dr. Tomlinson.
The nice thing about this new format of ours, now I don't have to talk as much. So hopefully you guys like this new. This is a change for us at our meeting, but I thought it was important for them to kind of give you a better idea of some of the tasks that they're charged with and also get more reports of kind of what's going on within the district. And I thought it gave you a little bit more in-depth look at some of the things to kind of give you a better idea of the holistic approach that we kind of take when it comes to our students. I wanted to lead off with this first chart here. This is something that we've been talking about each month and I want to keep it updated for you to see how we're going. So if you remember, the beginning of the school year, we actually started the year with $3 million less money than we started with last year. And I told you what we were going to try to do was slow down spending and try to flatten that decline. And I think you can see there that that's what we were able to do. We kind of had to say no on some things. We had to push back and kind of tighten our budgets a little bit. But you kind of see how we slowed our spending. And then back in December, we almost caught up with where we were last year, right? We almost made all that ground up. And then what we're able to see is we actually received more revenue than what was anticipated. It was a banner year for collecting taxes in Missouri. The state had a really, a good year overall. It really benefited us as well. And so now we're actually well ahead of where we were last year at this time. We've made up all of that ground and then surpassed it. We're actually above where we were back in the 18, 19 school year. As you'll see, what you can anticipate for the rest, look at all the other years, what happens as we go on from here. You get most of your revenues in January and then we'll get a few revenues come in from some of Dr. Gross's title programs and from Spen. But for the most part, we're making payroll in each of those months. And then we make our summer payroll and you can see that big drop at the end. And wherever we drop at the end will then be our starting point for the next year, right? So our whole goal here is how do we keep that to kind of track along this same pace where we finish above that red line when it's all said and done? If we're able to do that, then we had a pretty successful year when it comes to finances. If we drop back down to that marker or below it, then we probably overspent at some point between now and the end of the school year. And that's how we try to manage where our reserves are going to be. So I just want to kind of do a pictorial representation of how we look at our spending and our revenues throughout the year. So this is just our cash flow. There are a few large expenses coming up. There's also quite a few discrepancies that we'll get to later when we talk about some of the budget amendments. And I'll talk about more of those in a little bit. I don't know if you have any specific questions out there, but that kind of highlights how we're tracking. On the next slide, Leroy, I always like to pull up how our attendance is doing. We've actually been doing really well. Our attendance has improved greatly. Our 90-90 numbers still aren't where we want them to be, but I wanted to look at just raw attendance. If you take a look there, our high school has really done a great job with attendance. But honestly, across the board, these numbers are up from where we've been before. So I think I would attribute that a lot to our staff, making the programming relevant to kids and for our principals to make a priority to improve on our attendance. And so we're seeing some, some good numbers come back.
Was that a no pressure on the high school for going forward and next year?
I mean, would I just set the bar high? You know, it's a growth model. So you know, you gotta, you only get points for growing it more. Can't scare away on the first nitrate. On the last slide, I know you've seen it before, but I told you, I'm going to show it every single month because I really want to make sure this is communicated effectively to everyone in attendance, but also those who might watch online. What we're asking for in Proposition Lewis is the authority to change money that comes into Fund III to instead put it into Fund I. So we're going to collect the same amount of taxes, whether this passes or fails. It's the same amount. It's just whether we put the 70 cents into Fund III or we put the 70 cents into Fund I. It has to be in Fund I for us to be able to afford to pay the lease purchase costs to build a brand new elementary. And that's what we're asking voters. It really comes down to, do you want a new Lewis elementary? And if so, we can fund it with no increase to your tax rate. Instead of, we're just moving it from our savings account to our checking account so that we can pay the bills. And I, I think this is a good representation of what that means. People's overall taxes next year will be the exact same regardless of this passes or fails. So it's an important thing to note. And that's all I had, Mr. President.
Right. Any questions for Dr. Tomlinson? Hearing none. Let's move on. Next up is our discussion action items. First up is approval of the 23 budget amendment, Dr. Tomlinson.
Well, as I alluded to a few seconds ago, there's quite a few discrepancies in what our adopted budget was and what our working budget is. So I'll give you an example. If you were to say, hey, we're going to spend $2 million on transportation. So we look at our bus contract, how much the costs are, how much, how much gasoline is. You're going to build a budget for the year and say, we anticipate it's going to be $2 million. Well, we've gotten into this year and in reality, we've gone, we're quite off on what some of our estimates were. So we're having to make amendments to our budget to make sure that we're paying the bills. I'll give you, transportation's a great example. It's not even reflected in this amendment that I'm going to ask for you to approve, but this is how it changes so much. Just today, we went to go pay our bill to first student for our transportation. And the money in that budget is all $700,000 shy of what we need to be able to pay our bills till the end of the year. We can't not pay our bills for transportation on a contract that we have. So that's a $700,000 hit over and above on expenditures that we're going to see by the end of the year, that we have to make sure that we now figure out a way to come up with that difference. That's not even reflected in here. So I really want to make note that this budget amendment that I put in front of you was a snapshot at the time that I put this together, but it's something we go through each and every day. We find little things that we're trying to move around and kind of get settled out. There's always at least one thing a day. Is that fair? You guys probably have the same thing, correct?
Yes.
So we're trying to work through this the best we can, but it's kind of a moving target. And so I wanted to make sure I brought this to kind of give you an idea of some of the difference here. So we adopted a 40.7 million dollar budget in expenditures and our working budget's now up to 42.7, right? So that's when I show you that we're really trying to pull back on our spending and build that number up as far as we can. It's because we believe when it all comes and said and done, that we're going to spend a lot of that to actually pay off most of our expenditures. So we're trying to build up a little balance right now, but I don't know how well we'll be able to hold on to it come the end of the year. And our revenues though, this is a positive, is we did get more money from what was adopted to our working budget. So we did get a little bump there. So that was a good relief. But I don't know if that's going to be enough when it's all said and done. That's why we're being a little bit conservative. So if you have any questions on specifics, I did provide you examples of each of the line items and all the differences you can kind of see. Some of them are bigger than others. But at the end of the day, I really wanted you to understand that, you know, a couple million dollars difference for a school our size can make a really large difference. But I would ask for the board's consideration in approving the amended budget as presented.
First by Caitlin. Second by Darren. Does anyone have questions, comments for Dr. Tomlinson? Hearing none. All those in favor? And that passes six to zero.
I would like to mention one more thing. After you talk about all this exciting stuff, it really queues up the high school well to follow it. It sets the bar really low.
Is that my unofficial introduction?
Right. It's called a segue.
I need, speaking of needing a box to stand on so you can see me, you just going to click it for me? Do I need to clicker?
You turn your microphone on.
Just yeah.
Use your teacher voice.
Can you hear me?
No. We can hear you.
That's what she needs. Don't you think? You can hear it up there?
Does he even know what he's doing or is she just like?
I'm glad it's him, not me.
Leroy, would you like to show them how to turn the microphone on?
I think he did it. He did it. Okay. Let's talk about the high school. So I'm Kristin Everett, principal of the high school, and I'm thrilled to be able to spend a few minutes to talk about all the great things that our students and staff are doing. So I'll just start by sharing a little bit about our building philosophies for the year. We really are trying to narrow the focus and get good at what we're doing before we're adding more and additional things to the plate. So we came in this year really wanting to make sure we focused on having a culture of high expectations for ourselves, for our staff and for our students. A big piece of that is attendance and our align, alignment with our common assessments and our data tracking. So our data teams have really been kicking it off this year. Our admin team has done a lot of work leading those core data teams. And so I think that's translating into some student success that we'll talk about here in a little bit. Another big piece for us is just trying to use all of our non-core classes to help supplement the, our need to get better at decoding informational texts. And so we truly believe at the high school that every teacher is responsible for reading, teaching reading and supplementing those things. And so that's been a huge push in our non-core areas this year. And then the other thing is like, I think sometimes at the high school, we take ourselves way too seriously and think that it's all business, business, business. And if we want students to come to school every day, we have to have fun. And so everything that we've been doing this year is trying to have a little bit more fun as well. So those are our building goals. Our staff really worked on those together at the end of last year. And everything that we're going to talk about, that I'm going to talk about here is directly involved with one of those goals. And so, you know, graduation rate, obviously we want it to be 100%, but 95% or higher is the, is the bare minimum that we want. Attendance, our goal is 90% or better for that, for our students' daily attendance rate. ACT, we've got to be at least state average. We want to be better than state average. And so we've got to start building some, putting in some building blocks so that we get our students where they need to be. Part of that is decreasing our F rate and then really building our students' capacity to understand what their next step is when they leave our walls. So whether that is college, military, trade school, employment, I truly feel like it is our job to open up their eyes to those next, to that next step. And so that's been a huge focus for us this year. So just looking at a few things that we've done in the last month or so, I want to focus on some, some specific events. Our building leadership team did an amazing job of creating a new academic awards banquet. That's going to be something that we're going to do twice a year moving forward. We'll have one in the fall and we'll have one in the spring. And that's to really highlight those academic achievements that our students are showing in the classroom. So looking at those 4.0 level students, so that means not even an A minus. And we had over 85 students that had a 4.0, which is really amazing for last semester. We honored our top 10 EOC scores in every one of our areas as well as our ACT scores that were over 25 and our students who scored over 80 on our ASBAB test. So that was really great. It was, you know, we had some cookies and some refreshments for students and their parents and we really did have a great showing of that. So we're excited for next fall. We'll bring that in and then we're going to actually add our academic letter award winners to that as well. So we're going to continue to try to build up those academic opportunities to celebrate our kids. As Dr. Tomlinson mentioned, attendance has been a huge focus for us at the high school. You know, it is, it's, students can't do the things that we want them to do if they're not in our buildings. And so we have been really, really working hard on kind of a two-tiered approach, both celebrating and talking about, you know, what happens if they don't meet the goals. And so we do these really fun quarterly attendance incentives where we spin a big wheel and give lots of prizes. Our community has been amazingly supportive to donate funds so that people, we have opportunities to give great prizes. One of the things that last, when we did this for second quarter, students wanted shoes. They wanted like, how cool would it be to win a pair of shoes? And so we gave away two, two pairs of shoes and of their choice, up to a certain dollar amount. And the coolest thing was like, one of them, we thought they were going to like, you know, want Jordans or something fun like that. And one of the students picked steel-toed boots because he needed them for work. And then one of the other, another student came up and said, I have a student in my class who looks like he really needs some shoes. Can I give him my voucher and let him pick a new pair of shoes? And there's that, like, in my opinion, that summarizes our kids more than anything else that I can share with you. Like, just like celebrating each other, but taking care of each other. And that is something that I don't think happens by accident. I think like our, our students are just amazingly empathetic and kind. And like, our entire office staff were just in tears that day. And it was so fun when that student who got the shoes ordered them and came to the high school or came to the office to get them, which was just a really great day. So our attendance committee has been working so hard. You know, you can see by those numbers, lots of letters going out, lots of meetings, lots of probation talks, lots of goal setting. And it really is translating into better student attendance, which is going to translate into better academic success. And not just for their test scores, but for their next step too. We're teaching them the importance of showing up. One thing I'm very proud of this year is our building-wide assessment day. So this is something I believe that our students won't get better at standardized testing if we don't have them practice. And so a way to have them practice is to bring in this assessment day every year. And so a way to have them practice is to bring in this assessment day every year. I'm so thankful to the board for purchasing these tests for our students and how awesome that every junior was able to take the ACT or ASVAB. And so so many of them got that first initial score in October and are already signed up wanting to do our ACT boot camp this summer to improve that score. So just having them, that awareness for them, their junior year, is something that's been really great. They also got to have some fun after the test and we had all kinds of incentives. And the Army trailer came in with their video game simulator and kids got to play video games and stuff that day, too. So that was a really cool way to end it. College and Career Day is something that's supposed to happen on Thursday. Hopefully, the weather cooperates. We're not worried. It's fine. We're not worried about it at all. So we did an evening college and career fair in October for students to be able to bring their parents to. We've always done the college fair during the day, which I think is great because kids are a captive audience and they have to go. But we wanted to bring in two so that we have an event where in the evenings where parents can come with them as well. So we had that one in the fall and then our spring one is this Thursday. So our students will start the first two hours of the day on Thursday. We have, it's 48 professionals coming in to share stories about their careers. So students are signing up to see three different speakers. And then after that, there's, we're gonna have an hour and a half college and career fair where we have 50 colleges coming. We also have a special education transition fair that evening. So Thursday's a big day at the high school. We're, we have another element to Thursday that I'm gonna have some of our awesome SUCO members come up and talk to you about in just a second. But this is just one of those things where we're really trying to get them to understand post-secondary placement. What is their next step? And, you know, we have NFL player Sam Webb is coming, which on Thursday, which so many kids are excited. But we have medical examiners and realtors and HVAC people and just all kinds of different careers coming. We have estheticians and for people to really see like, what are some good opportunities? And then I just wanted to highlight, it really is a great place to be. Our students make it so fun to be there every day. Our staff are the most student-centered group of humans who really come every day to have fun with our kids. You know, we try to do fun assemblies, awards, spirit weeks, any opportunity we can to dress and be silly. We're really trying to take that opportunity with our students. So a huge piece of being able to bring this fun is our student leadership. And that has been really revamped this year. And so I have four members of our student council who I'm gonna have come up and share just a few things with you. Paige Crowley and Chloe Carlyle are going to be seniors, they're juniors. And then we have Madeline Andreessen and Reese Odell, our current sophomores. So they're gonna come up and just share just a little bit of information.
Hi, so I'm Paige Crowley. I'm the current vice president of student council at the high school and I'm running for president next year.
My name's Chloe Carlyle. I am a committee co-chair currently and I'm running as vice president with Paige.
My name is Reese Odell and I'm the current secretary and I'm running for president next year.
My name is Madeline Andreessen. I am the current sophomore representative and next year I'm running for vice president with Reese. We are super excited to be here tonight to talk to the board about the new, never been done before way that we are electing our president and vice president this year.
So in the past, we have always just had student council vote for president and vice president. But this year, we're having the entire school plus the eighth graders, minus the seniors because they're leaving, but the eighth graders will get to vote. Sorry. And then we're doing it electoral college style. So depending on their participation in student council, each grade is gonna get a different number of votes. And then whoever, whichever candidate gets the most votes from that grade will get that grade's electoral votes.
So as Paige said, the members in each grade that are most active in student council have the most electoral college votes. So for example, our current 10th grade class has the most active students in student council. So they have the highest number of electoral college votes.
So our previous system of, you know, electing new members of exec board was just held in student council. So like, that was the only votes that were counted. So this new system is really including more students and it's getting the whole student body. And our student co-sponsors also get to weigh in. So it really involves more people and more voices are heard and more opinions are heard.
Along with Dr. Everett.
Does anybody have any questions?
About student council in general, what we do?
This is happening on Thursday, so we'd really appreciate it if we had school.
Who makes that decision now?
Yeah, no pressure. I advocate.
Good to hear that. Talking to the right people.
Thank you.
A lot of pressure.
Yeah, no pressure, Dr. Tomlinson. So that concludes our high school update. Are there any questions that anyone has for me?
Thank you very much.
Alright, thanks.
Good job.
Next up, Mr. Ruby.
Good evening. My name is Mr. Ruby and I'm the director at the Career Center. I'm gonna come here today to talk about enhancement grants. And just kind of some background information, a lot of the machinery and pieces of equipment in our programs is very, very expensive. And to kinda help offset the cost of that, the state offers opportunities for enhancement grants. Well, they'll cover the cost, the part of the cost of the pieces of equipment that we ask for. So it's kind of a, one of those things where we have to submit an application, kinda tell why we need it, how we're gonna use it. And then the state decides, hey, if they'll match that, they'll let us know and then we can use those funds to kinda help us upkeep our equipment and enhance our programs. Couple of things tonight I'm gonna talk about. First is in our carpentry and construction program, there was a need for new work benches. The ones that we've had have been there for many, many years since the building was open and the tables are starting to get a little warp and dented. And we looked at some alternatives and so to replace those, we found a set of those work benches that not only include the table, but also include storage underneath and then vices on top of it also. So that way, when the students working on a project, they don't have to like, work on one thing here and take it over to another station to get it all set in place. So you're not gonna be that lag time. I don't know if you've ever worked on a table that's not straight and flat, it's harder to get those things plumb. So, so you can imagine, especially when you got kids new to carpentry and construction trying to do that, it makes it even more difficult. So those were, if you, on that second page, that's the first expense. So we're looking to get five of those. Estimated total cost is $17,000 and we can get reimbursed at that half, 50%. So the cost to the district would be $8,500. Next is in our automotive program. We have a, our, the certification that we use for that is called the Automotive Service Excellence, the ASE. And that's a pretty extensive process to get certified for that. So it's a multiple, multiple-year deal where they have to come in, inspect the program, go through all of your shop, equipment, your curriculum, all that stuff. It's pretty rigorous and intensive and so we just completed that. One of the, one of their big recommendations was for a new tire changer. The one we have is, is pretty old and it's not, the main thing is, it's not able to, to service those bigger tires that you see now on vehicles, like some people's trucks. So you have, not only that, but just like the clamping, clamping devices aren't, aren't up to par. And they're just not keeping up with the standard. And you might think, well, that's kind of a basic piece of equipment. And that kinda, the tire changer is, but that is when our kids get out and when they get certified, a lot of the entry-level positions that they'll take, that'll be one of their main, main tasks of what they do. If you look on that second page, altogether, that one's gonna, with all the different parts and the pieces, it's gonna be around $42,000, which then will get reimbursed at 75% on that. So that would put our out-of-pocket of the district right around about, I don't know, around, around $11,000. So altogether for those two, right around out-of-pocket max for the district, we'd be right around $19,000. So the total cost, we're looking at about $59,000, which is not, I mean, that's a lot of money, but in the grand scheme of things, those are two pretty important pieces of equipment. The last thing is for our middle school PLTW program for the automation robotics. Their, their curriculum that we're using is requiring an upgrade for their VEX V5 hardware. And if you're not familiar with that, that's kinda like the things they build, the little machines they build and then they can code on. It makes them do like the different task. So what they're needing is the kinda, the new guts for it, so the computer part of it. They don't need new parts, they just need the new computer system to it. So the ones we have are old and no longer are gonna be supported by the equipment they're gonna have to use to program those and code them. So that is another program improvement that we'll have. That'll come from a separate grant. Still, it's a 50-50 one. And Mr. Atkins has put that they will need seven of those. So that total cost would be $9,800 and then reimbursed at half of that. So cost to the district would be $4,900. So those are the grants that I am recommending. So at this time, if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer those.
Questions? So, so moved. First by Rick. Second by Kenny.
I have a question, actually.
Yeah.
Randomly, I went through the trades class for, with Mr. Barnes and all.
Yeah.
Those workbench stations, is that something that they could possibly build?
Yeah, that's, so...
Is that what you're doing or I'm just curious?
No, they're, it'll come and then we can help put them together. It'll help save on, that'll be kind of a project they can do. So I don't, five is what we're asking for right now. So that would get us, but we wanna make sure that for the ones that we can get replaced right away, we can do that and they can help put them together to work with maintenance. Any other questions? We have a first and a second. All those in favor? And that passes six to zero. Thank you very much. Very meritorious of you.
How treacherous.
Told you we worked that in. Next up, Ms. Rodbit.
Hi, good evening. I'm Jessica Rodbit.
Hang on, hang on. We got one more.
He missed one.
Before you. You can have a seat. Sorry.
We won't be too long.
Approval of the matching grants for program additions. Dr. Tomlinson, Mr. Ruby and Mr. Marshall. Mr. Grine.
Yes.
Where's Marshall at?
We were blessed with Mr. Grine's attendance this evening.
I was wondering why you were here.
I wanted to give an update. So we had every intention of coming here tonight with a plan that would be able to satisfy the needs for a new field house and also two program additions to the Career Center. And I'm gonna be perfectly honest, we worked on this till the very end of the day today. At the end of the day, we cannot come up with a plan that we feel is financially viable to move forward with our original plans. And I'll tell you, what we started off with was we thought we were gonna give about $900,000 in grant money. We thought we were gonna be able to add two programs to the Career Center. And in the process, build an entirely new weight room with a facility for physical therapy and occupational therapy as a lab. The problem with that is we were budgeting originally about $2.2 million, of which we thought we'd get $900,000 in grant money. Like, well, that seems like a pretty good deal. The problem with our construction costs currently and where the market is, is the bids came back in at over $4.2 million. That's almost double of what we were allotted to and what we were trying to budget for. And as I showed you before, in our current budget with where we're at, what we're trying to work through, we don't feel that's the best use of public funds at this time when we have other issues at hand. So we wanna pivot and move this in a different direction. So we are approved for grant money that Mr. Ruby was able to secure. But we wanna do those, actually pivot and take a look at doing some of the upgrades that are on a long-range plan for the Career Center. Those would include things such as the facade of the building, some restroom improvements, some site work, concrete work. Is I missing anything else? Those are some of the main things. These were already on our list of things to cover in our long-range plan. We thought we could go ahead and hit those now, especially because we were getting half the money put in by the state. So I think we're gonna pivot towards that. We're still gonna have to evaluate program additions moving forward. It's probably not gonna happen off of this building project. And that's just a consequence of how expensive it can be to build right now. So that being said, I wanted to go ahead and also preface the fact that I still believe we need to have an investment back into our weight room facilities for our students. We have, it's one of the most used areas of our building. And it's used all summer long, all day long, by countless number of students throughout our district. I wouldn't, we haven't touched that in over 20 years. If you walk into our weight room, it looks like, you know, Arnold Schwarzenegger, when he was 15 years old, would be in there. It kinda does. So I'm actually gonna work with a company that specializes in these. We're gonna come up with a plan to re-surface the flooring and come up with all new weights in there. And I think it will be at a fraction of the price of what we're looking. That's probably the best we can do for now. And that's kinda the approach that I'm gonna recommend we take. So I know that you have the high hopes of the, the great pictures and renderings of what we had. But to be honest with you, I think it'd be more prudent for us to pivot off of that, focus more of what we actually have, not overspend, and put more of our focus into taking care of some of the long-range facility plans that Mr. Ruby has in mind, so.
Is this something that we can revisit?
Well, it's up to you. You can always revisit, but I'll be honest with you.
I think it's something that seriously needs to be done. I think it's, it's like you said, it's used so much. I think it's something that needs to be done, in my opinion.
To go ahead and build it?
Not saying, that's why I'm asking if, if and when can it be revisited.
Well, it can be done at any time that we feel as if that we're gonna have the funding in place to be able to do it. I think at this point in time, we were trying to maximize the opportunity presented itself when the, the grant came available. So if we decide we want to build something like this, if we connect it to the current building the way it shows originally, that's, that was a $4.2 million bid. And that included all the equipment inside, everything all in. The problem with that is it created some firewall addition issues, which is about half a million dollars of the construction cost, which we didn't plan for anticipate. So what our plan was, is actually do a standalone building and pull it out and away. So we'd save some of those costs and actually go with a pre-steel building, right? And that was gonna be quite a bit less expensive. We were actually able to get the bill down to about $3.2 million. The problem is, then it no longer was able to be grant-eligible. It got away from what the grant process was. So then we were gonna pay the entire $3.2. Well, that's the same cost we would've paid if we would've got the nine and we paid the $4.2. Either way, we couldn't afford it. Right? So I, I think the, the message...
Government.
Yeah. But here's the message, guys, is, you know, we tried the best we could to find every possible scenario of what we could do and we just couldn't get all the puzzle pieces to fit. So we're not gonna try to force it to happen and overextend ourselves. And I think that's the important thing. So absolutely, we're always gonna look to revisit. We're always gonna look to try to improve and use things the best we can. But I would say right now, for the foreseeable future, the best option we have in front of us is probably to come up with all new equipment in the existing weight room, probably freshen it up, get new flooring, replace all the racks, all the weights. It'll, it'll be good. We'll do it the right way. And then somewhere down the road, when we have more opportunities, let's focus on getting Lewis built. Let's put all of our energy into proposition Lewis. Get kids moved in there safe and sound, up and rocking, and then maybe we can come back and revisit it in a couple of years.
But that grant money is going to take care of the updates you wanna do to the weight room and it's gonna take care of the...
No, it'll go to renovate or doing updates on the Career Center.
It'll, it'll be like, well, the front facade of the building, we'll get some updates. Some concrete work will be done. We wanna update the restrooms. But Mr. Ruby has a list of different things. We're gonna prioritize those and then we're gonna get cost estimates on each of those. Then we'll try to maximize what the return is with our grant money.
And that just knocks off some things off of our three-year long-range program that would've been done in year three or four. Could just be done now at grant, with grant money versus us paying for it.
I was in the Career Center when they built that new one that we have.
You helped build the Career Center?
I didn't, I, did I help build it?
That's what I heard.
I, I got to do the, the parking lot line, the parking spaces.
For real?
This was my room that I actually did cat in. Yeah. Wow. So and then they moved, so it's, it's, I think it needs to be updated.
Well, again, I think what it shows, Mr. Ruby's really put a lot of time and energy into making sure that we're being good stewards of taxpayer dollars. And at the same time, we're trying to maximize our return on investment that we're able to get into upgrading our facilities. So really commend him for the work he's done.
We need a vote on it?
We do not. Actually, I don't wanna vote on this because everything I was gonna present to you, I don't wanna do now. We can't afford it. But I think what we, what we're gonna bring back in March is we're gonna bring back some more specifics of what this is gonna entail so that we can go ahead and get approval to move forward with the revised plans that we still need to come up with.
Is that gonna include ventilation for the weight room?
It could. It could. I think that's what we're gonna have to do.
Don't they need that in there?
That's the wrestling room, I think, is where there's typically...
Oh, is it the wrestling room? Oh, okay.
I think the weight room's okay.
Excellent. The weight room's got doors outside.
Right. So...
So we're good there?
Seeing no motion. We can move on to... See no motion. We could move on to the.
Now, next up.
Kind of save the best for last.
Cornerstone Playground, Ms. Broadbent.
She gets the fun stuff.
Yeah, this is fun. All right, well, good evening. I'm Jessica Broadbent, the assistant principal at Cornerstone Elementary. Tonight, I am here to share with you a proposed plan of updates to our playground at Cornerstone. As you know, our student group has been working on designing and kind of figuring out what our student needs are for the playground. And with insight design, we've been able to put together some renderings. So we're looking at some addition of soccer goals here on the grassy field. Bucket balls or funnel balls, as I've learned is what they're called, at different heights. You see off in the distance, a little sun shade. That's our PTO's project. They're doing the color run in order to raise funds for that. But there's some picnic tables and the biggest one is a basketball goal. So I'm here tonight just asking for your approval for these additions to Cornerstone to not exceed more than fifteen thousand dollars.
Still moved.
First by Kaylin. Second by Kenny. Any questions? Comments?
Is that gonna be, also be able to be used for practices for like parks and rec and stuff like that too or?
I don't know if it's big enough, to be honest. Yeah.
They still had access to the gym, probably not outside.
Okay.
All those in favor? And that passes six to zero. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you.
That was really good. She, she was really good tonight.
I support her.
She's principal material, right there.
Yes.
If Ben quits copying all of them. All right, next up, approval of the network improvements at the high school, middle school, Career Center. Dr. Miller.
Thank you. Mine is not quite as glamorous. I'm just asking for wires. So fiber optics, wires. I didn't bring pictures. Yeah. And I know way more about this stuff than I ever cared to. So. Again, this is for high school and middle school, just some wiring updates. You can tell there have been some repairs made that are just kind of bandages. John's looking to do it correctly. So he took it out for bid. There's actually two projects that you see. The first one, Only Two Trees bid on. The second one, Two Trees bid on with another company. The other company actually came in a little bit lower, but it didn't include a lot of the things that they asked. Two Trees has a history of working with us. They're familiar with our staff and our buildings. So John actually wanted for me to recommend that we go with the Two Trees bid. The cost of the district is ninety, nine thousand five hundred and seventy dollars and sixty cents. The overall project cost is forty-five thousand dollars, six hundred and fifty-three. So we'll use some grant funds for that.
Looking for a motion on wires.
I was reading.
Any questions? Comments? Hearing that, all those in favor? And that passes six to zero. Thank you, Dr. Miller. And then last up on the agenda is the reschedule of the June board meeting.
Mr. President, as you know, each year we ask that we usually move this meeting because it allows us to do a better job of getting all of our finances in order. We can actually amend to actuals at the, close out all of our books so that we can read this, reset our new budget and start the new fiscal year on July first. So we've always moved this later and I just wanna go and take care of that now so people could plan for it well ahead of time.
Okay, moving from the thirteenth to the twenty-seventh. Yes. First by Kaylin. Second by Darren. That work for everybody? All right. All those in favor? And that passes six to zero. Do you guys have anything you wanna say out there?
Joe approved.
Joe approved.
Joe, cool.
Well, with that, I entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved. First by Rick, second by Jill. All those in favor? And that passes six to zero. Thank you, guys, for coming tonight. It was great.